Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 12th Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now move on to the oral call members. Madam Curran, call the roll, please.
Mike Kincaid.
President.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Morris Jones.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
Here.
Brent Wheat.
President.
Sierra Messenger.
President.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll look at the approval of the minutes from our previous... Oh, no, we will not be doing that. All right. Then we're going into swearing in for our Lebanon Police Department. Chief Morgan, start.
Good evening, council members. I'd like to introduce LPD's three of us new officers to the public and to you. Easton Williamson, Nathan Hosfield, and Gage Pedego. I'm proud to announce all three of these officers are Boone County natives and have made the commitment to serve the community they are from. They'll be attending the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy in January. The officers will be sworn in tonight by Mayor Matt Gentry. And they have each chosen someone special in their life to hold the Bible for them. So when I call you guys up, if you could bring that person with you. Easton Williamson, you can come up, bring your mom with you.
And repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
I, Easton Williamson.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And all laws and ordinances.
And laws, and all laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Lebanon.
Of the city of Lebanon.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member of the Lebanon Police Department.
As a member of the Lebanon Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank the mayor and the city of Lebanon for giving me this opportunity. I'd like to thank my family and friends for supporting me along the road. Thank you.
Gage Pedego, if you and your mother could come up.
Left hand on, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
I, Gage Pedego.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And all laws and ordinances.
And all laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Lebanon.
Of the city of Lebanon.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member of the Lebanon Police Department.
As a member of the Lebanon Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. So help me God.
Congratulations.
I would like to take this time to thank Mayor Gentry and his council for allowing me this opportunity to help serve my community. I would also like to thank Chief Morgan and the department for giving me the big brother aspect in making this transition in life so smooth and easy. And I'd like to thank my family for making this transition as smooth as they possibly could with it being a career that they might not favor. So, thank you.
Nathan, would you and your mother come up, please?
Left hand, raise your hand. Go. Aye, state your name.
I, Nathan Hosfield.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And all laws and ordinances.
And all laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Lebanon.
Of the city of Lebanon.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member of the Lebanon Police Department.
As a member of the Lebanon Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. First of all, thank you, Mayor Gentry and board. I appreciate having this opportunity and I will do the best of my ability. Thank you to my parents and family for supporting me along this journey and thank you to Chief and Lebanon Police Department.
I'd like to welcome these three young men to the LPD family and wish them a long, safe career. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And again, just one more round of applause for their service and then if you guys want to stay for the council meeting, we have some really good stuff, feel free. But if not, then we'll briefly recess, let you exit the room. Again, we do have to keep the doors open, so if you can be as quiet as possible or follow the chief out back outside, that'd be helpful as well, too. So I just want a round of applause for our new officers.
If you guys want to move in downstairs.
So we'll briefly stay in recess. Do I have consent from council to take the agenda out of order? That's it?
Yes.
Let's move on to new business, then. First item up is Resolution 2022-21, which is Browning Investments seeking a tax payment. And we have Molly Whitehead from the Boone County Economic Development Corporation here tonight with us.
Good evening, council. Molly Whitehead, Boone EDC. As the mayor mentioned, I'm here tonight on behalf of Browning Investments, which is considering constructing three spec buildings on 65 and 39 there behind the Flying J Truck Stop. This is a 57-ish acre parcel. It has worked with numerous developers over the years because it has been a difficult parcel to develop. And so Browning has come up with a plan and has gotten farther than anybody else on this. What they are proposing is a three-spec building development. Again, what a spec building is, is a building built on speculation. There's no user that is identified. Oftentimes, what we do see with spec buildings is that as demand continues to stay pretty high, that sometimes those buildings do find a user to go in them prior to completion. At the very least, even if a user is not identified, that building is still constructed, that building is still paying taxes to the city of Lebanon. So these three-spec buildings, two of them are anticipated to be around 145,000 square feet. The third is about 360,000 square feet divisible. What we like about this size of building or these sizes of buildings is it's a much better fit for the demand that we see. Generally speaking, most of the leads that come into the Boone EDC seek an already existing building. And then of that, generally, the smaller is generally more high in demand. Usually about 50,000 to 100,000 square feet is our biggest request. 150 is certainly well within that range. So again, having something that's divisible helps us fit that need and say yes to more opportunities on behalf of the city. The estimated capital investment, please note that the memo that I sent you had an incorrect number to our benefit. The SB1 amount that you'll see is 48.9 million dollar capital investment, which simply means that the estimates that I'm about to provide you tonight are just much more conservative and you should anticipate more income coming in than my calculation. What we are recommending you consider is a 10-year non-traditional tax abatement. That is, following a schedule of years 1 through 3, 75% abatement, meaning the company receives 75% discount on their property taxes. They would pay 25%. Years 4 through 6 at 50%, years 7 and 8 at 25%, years 9 and 10 at 10%. What we generally see with developer projects, especially with spec buildings, is that 10-year does seem to be somewhat of a magic number, helps maintain that competitiveness with companies that are used to seeing that 10-year number, which is why we arrived at 10-year but just simply sought the non-traditional route. We estimate, again, my number is being a little bit lower, at the time I estimated around $2.1 million that that would be in savings to the company. So that number, assuming everything is correct today, as it would be in 10 years, would still be around $2.1 million. And we estimate that the levy, what you bring in for taxes, be around $2.6 million. So we would just see that scaled up a little bit higher as well. With that, happy to answer any questions that you all may have. And John Coho from Browning is here as well.
Do you want to touch on any of the site issues of why we've had problems in the past with it? Any...
John can obviously speak to this much better than I can. Generally, the reason that I've been given over the years is that wetlands right in the middle of the property does make it more difficult to develop. A lot of the developers that have considered the area over the years have not been based in Indiana. So I do think that is something that John and the Browning team can bring to the table is that knowledge of how things work here.
Thank you. Any questions from Molly from the council?
No.
No? Okay. Any questions for Browning?
Nope.
All right. Rob, can you read the resolution, please?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Resolution 2022-21 is a resolution of this council regarding certain real property tax abatement deductions for Browning Investments LLC. Whereas pursuant to Indiana Code, which is defined as the Act, the city of Lebanon, by and through its council, acting in its capacity as the fiscal body of the city and acting as a designating body identified in the Act, has the right and opportunity to abate the payment of real and personal property taxes. Whereas pursuant to the Act, the council may find that a particular area within the jurisdiction of the city is an economic revitalization area and may by adoption of a resolution declare such area to be an economic revitalization area. Whereas this council adopted in Resolution 2018-19 a declaratory resolution on May 14, 2018, pursuant to the Act declaring the area whose boundaries are located within the corporate boundaries of the city that comprise approximately 58 plus or minus acres that are described in Resolution 2018-19 within the Lebanon Business Park as an economic revitalization area. Whereas this council, after following all applicable procedures of the Act, took final action adopting Resolution 2018-19 on May 14, 2018. Whereas Browning Investments LLC, where it's assigned, has advised this council, it intends to construct three speculative buildings in the areas at the locations commonly known as 8940 River Crossing Boulevard, Suite 300, Lebanon, Indiana, that's described in Exhibits A and B. Whereas the applicant submitted to the council a statement of benefits of real property, the SB1, the statement and its attached says Exhibit C. Whereas the applicant has advised the council, it proposes to complete a significant investment involving the construction of three speculative buildings, which will be precast concrete with steel internal frame and roofing totaling approximately 653,000 square feet. That's the project. Whereas applicants requested the city approve a 10-year real property tax deduction scheduled for the project. This council has reviewed the statements. The improvements of the area will be a public utility and benefit in welfare of the citizens and taxpayers of the city. Whereas the council has considered the following factors under the Act in connection with this project. The total amount of applicants' investment in real property for the project. The project's potential to attract new and expanding businesses to the community. The potential of new full-time equivalent jobs to be created by the project and the infrastructure requirements for the applicant's investment in the project. Therefore, this council finds that the proposed project will be located in the area which confirmed as, has been confirmed as an economic revitalization area. Section 2, based upon the information in the statement, the council makes the following findings. The estimate value of applicant's project shown on the statements is reasonable. The applicant's project has the potential to attract new and expanding businesses to the community. The potential number of individuals who will be employed as a result of the proposed project can reasonably be inferred from the proposed project. The benefits described in the statement can reasonably be expected to result from the proposed project. The totality of benefits for the proposed project is sufficient to justify the real property tax deduction schedule set out herein. The statement submitted by the applicant is approved. The applicant is entitled to real property tax deductions for the proposed construction of the real estate as part of the project for a period of 10 years in accordance with the following schedule as Ms. Whitehead indicated. Years 1 through 3 at 75%, years 4 through 6, 50%, years 7 and 8, 25%, years 9 and 10 at 10%. Pursuant to the Act, a copy of this resolution shall be filed with the Boone County Auditor and it shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you, Rob. I kind of caught something in there that we probably need to amend. I think we actually put the address of Browning Investments, looks like, in that resolution and not the actual property location. So under the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th whereas statement, correct? I would like to, I would entertain a motion to amend that to read three speculative buildings in the area at the location commonly known as the Interstate, intersection of Interstate 65 and State Road 39, Lebanon, Indiana. It's that area there behind the...
Right. It has a street name, but it fails me at this point.
There's Cox Avenue, but it's not actually, doesn't go through the property all the way, so I'm not... There's a better, that's what they put in the SB1 form, so that's why I thought it would kind of match that unless there's another idea for that. There...
You want us to amend it by saying the address is I-65 and 39?
Or at the location commonly known, or at the location, or the general area of... Looking at the lawyer.
I think we can say generally located at...
Generally located at?
Yeah.
So in the areas, okay, this will be the amendment, then. Generally located at State Road 39 and Interstate 65?
Yeah.
Should we identify the quadrant, maybe?
The rest of the resolution indicates the full legal description of the property. So if the concern is over just giving a general State Road 39 and I-65, the county won't just accept anything and abate anything in that general area. It has to go with the legal description that would be a part of the resolution.
Correct, yes.
We just don't want to have River Crossing on there as the address.
Right. Well, and I just was having the, I mean, I just was matching what it says in the Section 2 of the SB1.
Correct.
But then there's a separate legal description.
Correct.
In the resolution as well.
Online mapping shows it as West Cox Avenue.
Really? Okay.
Yeah.
West Cox Avenue.
Okay. Kevin?
Sure.
Per RGIS, 705 West Cox Avenue. There are several parcels, but that's the largest primary parcel there.
Okay. So then we'll have it, so then we'll just amend the address there then to 705 West Cox Avenue.
On Exhibit A.
And then also amend Exhibit A to reflect that as well, too. Have a motion to amend the resolution?
I'll move that we approve Resolution 20...
I need a motion to amend.
Oh, to amend.
Yep.
I'll still amend to reflect 705 West Cox Avenue.
Okay. We have a motion to amend in a second. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Supposed? Okay. Okay, resolution now amended. Is there any public comment on the resolution that hasn't read? Okay. We now entertain a motion to adopt a resolution as amended.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 2022-21 as amended.
As amended, there we go. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Sierra. All the officers say aye.
Aye.
Supposed? That resolution is approved. Thank you, council. Sorry for the late catch there.
I just have a question. Did Keith Campbell, did you second Brent? Thank you.
Yes, he did. Yep. Thank you, Molly. Thank you, Browning, for your investment in Lebanon. We appreciate their long-term partnership going forward. Thank you. That concludes what I have for new business from the councils. Anything else on new business?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll go to old business. Seeing who else is here in the audience, we'll continue to take the agenda out of order. We have Ordinance 2022-26, council to consider rezone for 552, 554, 600, and 650 South State Road 39. It's on the second reading. We have Matt Reynolds.
Good evening, mayor, council. Here tonight for a second reading of a rezone that Ben demonstrated to you at your last meeting. If they want to pull up the overhead here, I'll give just a brief recap. The area that we're referencing is on South State Road 39, literally next door to the abatement that you just offered. So the Flying J Truck Stop to the north, State Road 39 on the east, and I-65 just a fraction off the page there. The owner, Donaldson's Chocolates, had, gave some consideration to adding some additional retail commercial space to their property and also expanding to offer a little more retail restaurant in the area. So a rezone was necessary. The property is currently zoned Plan Business Industrial and looking at a request to rezone to Plan Business Commercial. So tonight is the second reading of the rezone to Plan Business Commercial.
Any questions for Matt on that proposal? Okay. Rob, can you please read the ordinance as a second reading?
Thank you. Mayor, council, ordinance 2022-26 again concerns an amending zoning map of the city of Lebanon. Whereas the petitioner's GRD Properties LLC and DE Real Estate LLC filed an application for rezon before the city of Lebanon Plan Commission, seeking to rezone approximately 3.02 acres in center township in county, being located at 552, 554, 600, and 650 South State Road 39, and more particularly described in Exhibits A and B, from Plan Business Industrial Zoning Classification to Plan Business Commercial. Pursuant to Indiana Code, the city of Lebanon Plan Commission conducted a required public hearing on August 15, 2022, and voted 8 to 0 to send a favorable recommendation, the rezoning petition of the property, and certified its recommendation to this body on August 16, 2022. Pursuant to Indiana Code, the Lebanon, this council has considered the application and recommendation of the city of Lebanon Plan Commission and now adopts the following, that the petitioner, GRD Properties LLC and DE Real Estate LLC are the owners of the property. The petitioner seeks to have the property, again comprised of approximately three acres and located at 552, 554, 600, and 650 South State Road 39, which are described in Exhibits A and B, rezoned from Plan Business Industrial Zoning to Plan Business Commercial Zoning. This council has paid reasonable regard to the applicable comprehensive plans, the current conditions and character of the current structures and uses in each district, and the most desirable use for the land in each district. From and after this date, the official zoning map of the city shall be changed to rezone the subject property from Plan Business Industrial Zoning to Plan Business Commercial. And again, the director of the city for Plan Commission is authorized to change the official zoning map consistent with this ordinance.
Thank you, Rob. Ordinance has been run on a second reading. Any council discussion comments? Any public comment? Okay. I would entertain a motion then concerning Ordinance 2022-26.
I make a motion, we approve of ordinance 2022-26.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion of second from John. All the officers say aye.
Aye.
Supposed? That is approved, yes, I think, council. Okay, continuing, Ordinance 2022-27, council to consider rezone for 1121 North Lebanon Street. This ordinance is also on second reading. Matt Reynolds.
Good evening again. Another second reading for a rezone, this time just on the other side of town. We are on North Lebanon Street, on the west here, just south of Camp Street. We have the property owned by Dr. Cashon and LLC. Very similar rezone to Dr. Cashon's property to the north that we saw in December, a little bit less than a year ago. The neighboring property to the south, looking to expand and add some commercial retail or, I'm sorry, commercial retail to that property. There are two properties that sit here, the property in question and the property of the south that are currently, the property of the south is currently a residential property. Everything else around it is commercial, both to the north, south, and west. To the east would be residential. So this is in that transition area of where we're moving from primarily residential up to the traditional commercial area. So this is a second reading request for a rezone from SF2, Single Family 2, to Plan Business Commercial.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Matt from the council?
Yeah. So they're going to remove the houses and build something?
No. No, the house will remain. Even, the house will remain, as the plan. They will add some commercial retail or salon-type space to the existing property, very similar to what has happened to Dr. Cashon's property on the north side there. It was zoned SF, Single Family, and was rezoned to Plan Business Commercial to allow for retail. Now, this, if the property is torn down, redevelopment is very difficult, simply because of the zoning requirements for Plan Business Commercial. To meet the setbacks of Plan Business Commercial, to meet our thoroughfare overlay standards, to meet our requirements for parking, our buffer yards, this is a quarter acre lot. You're not going to be able to build hardly anything on there other than a small building. So you're not going to get a gas station, you're not going to get a Walgreens or a CVS. This is probably the only use outside of a single-family residence that would be able to fit on that particular parcel.
So they put, they'll put a business inside the existing structure?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, they would just operate a business out of, out of what is a home.
Okay. Where's the parking for this?
Right now, there currently isn't any parking, but that would be part of the development plan process. If they do decide to add a business to that parcel, they would submit a development plan that would have our traditional review that would include parking and we would ensure that they had the required number of spaces for whatever use does go in there, whether it's a salon or a beauty parlor or an insurance office, whatever the case may be. It would undergo development plan review and we would ensure the required parking is met.
Any further questions for Matt?
No, thank you.
Rob, read it then.
Thank you, mayor, council. Ordinance 2022-27 again concerns an ordinance rezoning property and amending the zoning map of the city of Lebanon. Whereas the petitioner, SL Enterprise LLC, filed its application for rezon before the city of Lebanon Plan Commission, seeking to rezone approximately 0.25 acres in center township, being located at 1121 North Lebanon Street, Lebanon, Indiana, and which is described in Exhibits A and B, from Single Family Residential SF2 zoning classification to Plan Business Commercial Zoning. Pursuant to Indiana Code, the city of Lebanon Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on August 15, 2022, and voted 8 to 0 to send a favorable recommendation of the rezone of the property and certified its recommendation to this body on August 16, 2022. Pursuant to Indiana Code, this council has considered the application and the recommendation of the city of Lebanon Plan Commission and now finds as follows. The petitioner, SL Enterprise LLC, is the owner of the property. The petitioner seeks to have the property, again comprised of approximately 0.25 acres and located at 1121 North Lebanon Street, described in Exhibits A and B, rezoned from Single Family Residential SF2 zoning to Plan Residential SF2 zoning to Plan Business Commercial zoning. This council has paid reasonable regard to the applicable comprehensive plans, current conditions and character, and current structures and uses in each district. And from and after this date, the official zoning map of the city of Lebanon, again, shall be changed to rezon the subject property from Single Family Residential to Plan Business Commercial.
Thank you, Rob. Ordinance has been read on a second reading. Further discussion from council?
No, sir.
Any public comment? I see Dr. Cashon in the back there. Feel good? Just thumbs up that he wants to do it?
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, any questions for Dr. Cashon?
No, sir.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, then, would entertain a motion then concerning Ordinance 2022-27.
I'll move we approve Ordinance 2022-27.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposed? That is adopted, yes, I think, counsel. Okay, revert back to our regularly scheduled agenda then. First up, or now first up, Ordinance 2022-25 Flood Plane Ordinance Update, and this is also a second reading. Derek Warren.
Good evening, counsel. This was presented to you at the last council meeting. This is the second reading, as the mayor mentioned. I would be happy to go over the details again, if anybody would like to be put to sleep.
I hit the highlights.
If not, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have had from the last presentation.
Any additional questions for Derek? Again, last time I heard, this is kind of a boilerplate update we need to adopt. And again, we've had our teams look at it, we're comfortable with it. Any concerns?
No concerns.
Okay. Any public comment at this time? That's a burning issue. Okay, Rob, have you read it? Again, highlights.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Ordinance 2022-25 is an ordinance that amends Ordinance 2017-05. The city is a duly-formed municipal corporation within the state of Indiana. Council adopted Ordinance 2017-05, which is an ordinance for flood hazard areas within the city. The council has considered the request for an amendment and now wishes to repeal and replace Ordinance 2017-05 in its entirety. Therefore, this council finds as follows: the foregoing recitals are incorporated by reference. Ordinance 2017-05 shall be repealed and replaced with this ordinance, and the flood plane management regulations that are attached heretofore as Exhibit A are incorporated herein. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect in accordance with Indiana law. Just Exhibit A, again, for this council has 29 pages. Mr. Warren went through them in detail. I can hit the highlights. On Article 1, again, just talks about the statutory authorization. Article 2 is the definitions. Article 3 goes through the general provisions. Article 4 is the administration. Article 5 talks about certain provisions for flood hazard reduction. And then, Article 6 just deals with the legal status provisions in there that we see in many contracts.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Ordinance has been read on a second reading and no public hearing, correct?
Good.
Okay. Any further discussion, conference or council?
No, sir.
Okay. This time then, I would entertain a motion concerning Ordinance 2022-25.
Motion we approve Ordinance 2022-25.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Morris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposed? All right, that is adopted, yes, I think, counsel. Okay, next up will be Ordinance 2022-25. Actually, these next four obviously are all related, maybe just have the utilities come forward and, you know, I know we're kind of going back and forth about some maybe changes to these, so let's just talk about those, and then we'll dive into all these.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for saving the best for last. I do have a brief recap and a few slides. Just a few weeks ago, we talked about the purposes of these four ordinance was to harmonize the definitions across the utilities, standardize non-recurring fees, things like bad check charges, inspection fees, service fees. But of course, the big-ticket item is the availability fees. Gave us some homework last time with some recalculation. I should point out that the utility board, they had a unanimous resolution to approve the calculations as we did them before, but I do have some information I was going to share here. Just some points of clarification. There's no rate increase for the current rate payers. Just want to make sure that's clear in all the documentation. The recurring fees should help with the rates in the long run, but there's no increase in, you know, dollars per gallon or anything like that. Our new availability fees should differ from a market comparison and are reasonable. Last time Jeff Jacob got up and mentioned how legally we should consider the calculation and not the comparison, but practically, it makes sense too. And third point is Lebanon Utility Service Board recommended calculation includes projects we were told would be only partially funded by TIF, and we did calculations to take those out. So, again, the slide is to reinforce, current rate payers will see no rate change. The immediate impact they might see is if they write a bad check, that fee will be more. Future impact on current rate payers is growth pays for growth. As we get more money in the kitty for availability fees, the next future rate increase will be less. Now, the practical reason why our availability fees should be maybe more than our neighbors is there's no water in Boone County. There's no navigable waterway, just Prairie Creek, very little stream. There's no groundwater for us, for us to drill and get water, we have to convey it from somewhere else. There's no stream for us to easily discharge to. And I have a copy of an article from 2017, Lebanon Reporter, and Lebanon and Boone County deny sufficient surface or groundwater capacity for future growth. Regional approaches needed to ensure future water needs. As an example, Indianapolis is, you probably know this, is the largest city in the United States built, not built on a navigable waterway. They have a big reservoir there, which helps them grow. If we had a big reservoir here, it'd be a lot easier for us to make capacity available, but we're working on a regional solution. Also, in general, costs have increased over time. I caution you that, but the graphs I made here are just based off of the producer price index, if you'd advanced them by what the rates were, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics by year. But you can see that our rates have stayed the same on availability fees while other costs went up. And I tried to summarize this information for water and sewer, the availability fees in, excuse me, fees in 2004 for water was $2,000, and sewer was 1,700, that's what they are today. Recommended by the Lebanon Utility Service Board and backed up by the Baker Tilly calculation is 4,600 and 4,800. To keep you from eye strain picking the number off my graph, the number predicted by the 3.4% average PPI is 3,600 for water and 3,077 for sewer. But we also removed from the calculation anything that was, that we had as partially funded by TIF to assume it was fully funded by TIF, which included the capacity development for water. And came up with a fee of 2,700 for water and 3,200 for sewer. And apologies to the slide, it might be too hard to read. I can give you copies later if necessary, but I just wanted to highlight that what you're seeing on the left bottom of the slide is the sewer capital budget projects, and I've circled the areas that Scott Miller from Baker Tilly changed. He took, we had a number in there, and we changed it to zero, did the same thing on the water side, and ran the calculation through. So, hopefully that answers the lingering questions from last time and from discussions. I have my whole team here. I've got Sandra Morgan, our CFO, Jeff Jacob, our attorney, Ryan Ottinger, my water and wastewater guru, and Scott from Baker Tilly. So, are there any questions from me or my staff?
Are you saying that you're changing the proposed amendment for the availability fee to the new 2,700 and 3,200? Is that what, on the sheet?
No, the Lebanon Utility Service Board passed a resolution, and they still recommend what's in the ordinance. But I'm providing information, because what you could do is, the city council will have discussions, and you might approve a number less than that. It's our hope that you approve something tonight, though, because these four ordinances work together as far as a late check fee, because if we don't approve all the ordinances, as an example, if somebody writes a bad check, what fee can we back up legally that we charge them if we just pass the electric and they paid the whole bill on for water, wastewater, and electric?
Yeah, so to Sierra, to answer your question too, right? So, we wanted to, you know, after the last discussion, you know, I think some of the council members came to me, were like, hey, there's some of these projects, we've, there's other sources paying for these, right? And so, we wanted to see, yeah. Yeah, and that's where we wanted to see what those numbers would be when we pull those out of that calculation, right? So, that's what that, the 2,700 and the 3,200, or 2,700 for water, 3,200 for wastewater is, when you pull those out. Though, also, Ed showed in the last slide too, with what the three, if you want to pull the presentation back up real quick, the PPI change, right, that's a 30, you know, that's assuming the price increases, the 3% over the time, like, that's what those would have resulted in as well, right? So, this can be a discussion of, and this is kind of the will of the council, honestly, of where you guys feel these are right. Because, I mean, I heard some of the feedback that maybe we felt the first proposal was too high, because we knew that there were other sources that were going to pay for some of these projects, so we shouldn't be double-charging residents for that, right? Or not residents, but new developments for that, or, you know, balancing that with the, maybe somewhere in the middle, right? And that's a discussion that we kind of can talk through tonight, essentially.
Yeah, I think I can share from discussions with the Lebanon Utility Service Board, our public meetings, we don't really have a memorandum of understanding, like we often do with a developer, or with the RDC, or with anyone for these funding sources. It doesn't work that way on these projects that are, like LEAP, that are this large. It's a matter of things that happen above the pay grade of us assigning something with a developer. So, that makes it be a judgment call on something that's up to your discretion. But I need to reiterate that my board charged me with recommending what they passed on the resolution, so.
What's the PPI?
Producer Price Index.
Okay.
It's similar to the CPI, but it's more tied to construction than the CPI. It's a very similar number, though.
So, Ed, Baker Tilly recommended the 4,600 and the 4,800, correct?
Yes, but they recommend things based off of the information we give them. I guess Scott could speak to that more, you know, he could go in that direction.
So, but the next one under, that the PPI of 3.4%, is that an estimated increase from, like, say, water, from 2,000 to 3,620 over a period of time at 3.4%?
Yes. All I did is I just took the 1.034 to the 18th power, you know, power for, you know, just.
That's if we had, if we had been adjusting our 2004 rates with CPI every year, right? That's what they would be at today.
Okay.
That's what that number is.
All right.
Yeah, that's a less nerdy explanation than I gave you, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there, is there a critical rush? Because I know we have, like, in my notes here, I have my, the Business Park Regional LS project is projected to possibly be less, the State Road 39, partially funded by the RDC, the Fieldhouse Project, State Road 39, partially, potentially, you know, developer, maybe, and then, or water. I mean, those are some major projects that we have coming in that's going to drastically change, could drastically change our numbers. I know that there is the slide that you gave us with a different number, but, I mean, I don't know, is it?
Yeah, so that's what, so that's what those number, right? So.
All of that is included in, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All of those projects, sorry, guys, if you can't hear me, I apologize. So, all of those.
Those projects you talked about, those have been pulled out.
Pulled out.
Right, so that's what that, that's what those red, that red circle on those numbers, that's the number for all the other projects that are planned, right? But the ones that are funded from other sources are pulled out of that fee structure.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, and to your point, right now, our availability fees are 18 years old, so it's critical to us that we move them up, but to your point, it would be better to move them up possibly more conservatively and then raise them up again later if some of these projects fall through, so you don't have to, so you don't have to, like, raise it high and then move it down.
I think Sandra had said that we're going to be reassessing these every year in case, you know, we need to change it, but is that the standard every year? They typically go and analyze these to readjust the fees, or is it typically every five years, 10 years? Like, is there, is there a standard across the board, or no?
It really depends. In communities where there's low growth, there's really no need to reassess them. In communities where there's high growth, they assess them more frequently. But I've only worked for four or five communities. Scott from Baker Tilly might be able to address that, he works with many communities. I don't know, give me anything to add to that, Scott, or?
If I had my way, I would have utilities adjust their rates every year, just to keep up with costs. But that's not politically the way things work. I am aware of a couple of communities, however, that do have an annual adjustment to all of their fees, including the availability fees that go up each year to change costs. So, it just, as Ed said, it depends on the community and what their preference is, but 18 years is too long.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. Further discussion?
I don't know.
Do you want to hear any public comment, maybe, and then have that spur?
Yeah, sure.
These will have public hearing as well later too, but if there's anyone that wants to comment generally on all four of them, please first step forward.
Good evening. My name's Aaron Smith. I'm a resident here in Lebanon. I'm also a member of the Utility Service Board, but this evening, I am presenting as an individual citizen. I have not reviewed my presentation with any staff members or with any other board members. Let's see. I'd like to start with a summary of my remarks. Water and wastewater availability fees are rate payer-friendly because developers pay their fair share, A, to access our existing utility infrastructure, and B, for the utility capacity expansion projects their new developments require. Current rate payers do not have to subsidize developers with rate increases and higher utility bills. New development projects that have been announced this year will require an additional water source and a wastewater plant expansion years sooner than previously anticipated. If it is assumed that our needed additional water will be purchased from the LEAP district, then the adopted water availability fee should be at least $3,000 per EDU. The adopted wastewater availability fee should be $4,800 per EDU as proposed. Increased availability fees must be adopted this evening without delay, as the current 18-year-old availability fees are not sufficient to protect existing rate payers from unneeded rate increases. Next, I have some information that supports this summary. First of all, this is, this is what has been discussed, and I won't go over this in considerable detail, but the water availability fee has two components. The buy-in component, which was determined as of December 31 of 2021, the utility plant and service, accumulated depreciation, contribution, need of construction, outstanding long-term debt. All of those are solid numbers that are in place, and when you divide that by the number of the present equivalent dwelling units, you get the $2,200 proposed buy-in. Next is the incremental cost component, and this is based on the budget that Lebanon Utilities prepared in December of 2021. This budget looked forward through 2027 with the information we had available at that time. Now, for that buy-in component, you have seen this in various forms. This is what was, this is what was used for the proposal. Now, I believe that, that some folks favor taking out that $30,500,000, because there's confidence that the LEAP district will provide the additional water supply, and that we will not have to get an additional water supply through our southern boundary. And this has already been discussed, the revised availability fee, if you take out that $30,000, $30,500,000, is, is $2,700. Now, what is useful is to look at what the various growth, projected growth that has already undergone TAC review will impact the water availability. Today, we have 9,029 EDUs available, water plant capacity. If you look at all of the, if, if all of these developments that have gone through TAC are completely completed as planned, they will use up 9,129 EDUs, meaning that we will have no additional capacity available. Now, it has been determined through, through engineering studies and work through the city administration that we can get 2,000 milligram, 2,000 million gallons per day peak additional capacity of 4,000 EDUs from an additional water source south of town. Now, instead of costing $30,500,000, this updated estimate as of July 20th is $55 million. So if, if, I'm hoping for, for the sake of our chief financial officer at least, that we get a memorandum of understanding from the state that, that they will provide the additional water source. If, if something falls through, we, the board has asked our chief financial officer every May, by May 1st of every year to review the availability fees to see if they're adequate. So if something falls through on this LEAP water availability, we'll be coming back to you for a requested increased availability fee that will be somewhat more than what's in front of you tonight. Now, let's look at what, what would be some of the projected water availability fee totals. That previous page had 9,100 and something EDUs projected for future growth. And by the way, we don't know when that future growth, all of it's going to exactly take place. But if you multiply all of that EDUs minus the Angelie Gardens, which you waived, using the current water availability fee, we would have, we would generate $18 million of availability fees. If you use the, our proposed $4,600 water availability fee, the total amount that would be generated would be 41.5 million. And the revised 2,700 water availability fee amount that would be provided is 24.3 million. Now, if you use what I consider my alternative $3,000 water availability fee, the amount would be $27 million. Now, the reason I request that is that we do not know if the LEAP district provides our water, whether the quality of the water will meet our standards. And if it doesn't meet our standards and has to be in essence retreated, then there will be an unknown cost for that to take place. We will very likely have to improve the infrastructure in our plants to retreat that water. And if you choose the $3,000 availability fee, the 2,700, $2.7 million would be generated extra to pay for the possible treatment of that water. Any questions about the water?
Questions from Mr. Smith from council?
Well, we better hope the LEAP district comes through with their almost promise.
Perhaps so.
Well, I'm, I'm actually with the mayor tomorrow, meeting with them, so that's going to be my number one question.
And, and you're my number one fan, thank you.
Mr. Smith, just to clarify, so are you suggesting you're recommending a $3,000 availability fee for water or the 4,600 as, as the utility board?
If, if the collective wisdom of, of you folks is that LEAP will provide the water, then I'm suggesting 3,000 instead of the 4,600. I, I, like I say, I'm an MOU guy, memorandum of understanding guy. And, and if I had, if that was in front of you, I would be all ecstatic about the 2,700 or 3,000. But, but it's not, so conservatively, I'm for the 4,600. But I understand that your collective wisdom may be better than mine.
Well, my opinion is, the LEAP district, we have no idea how long that's going to take. And so, since we haven't raised this in 2004, we need to move forward with the 4,600 like the experts say in order to not get behind. That's my personal opinion.
So, I would, I mean, Morris and Brendan, if you guys want to jump in, you guys are on a meeting with me about this with the state from the water sourcing standpoint. Obviously, $30 million is a big number, right? And, yep, the article that Ed showed is absolutely correct. And there isn't easily accessible water here in Boone County. We know that for a long time. This LEAP project is providing us that opportunity for that water supply and potentially is providing to us where our taxpayers aren't burdening the vast portion of that cost. Because the state is, the state is partners with us in this development, right? They, they are buying the land, they're the ones that are leading economic development on it. They want to see this succeed. They know the water is a problem. They've been looking at the water problem as part of that issue from the beginning. And Brendan, Morris, feel free to jump in, but I think the state has actually a pretty clear timeline on how they provide water to us. This is a rapidly changing situation that's being updated constantly. But I mean, the meeting I was in last week, they would be able to provide this 10 million, 10 million gallons of water, which is more than we were actually even seeking from the, initially, in the next 24 months. So it, and then, of course, then there's the vision to provide an even more astronomical number of 60 million gallons of water to us in the next, you know, 36 to 48 months after that. So I guess it comes down to, do you trust this, the partnership we have with the state on this project to provide this significant level of water that we both need to make this a success? And how much is the state willing to invest to make sure that it is a success? Or do we want to increase the rate on, do you want to include projects in the calculation that we apply to all new development that are paying for a project that may or may not be, that we would actually be accomplishing locally? Right, that's the trade-off.
I, I said what I said based on the information I had.
And I understand that completely.
Yeah, I haven't met with those, IEDC yet.
I'll go ahead and chime in here as the mayor said, said in on some of these meetings. I think the state is doing everything they can, and I think if I had to bet my own money, that they will probably get this accomplished. However, there's a lot of moving parts and we don't control any of it. So when I look at this thinking, if we cut this number back and the state thing falls through, we're really behind the curve, the, the power curve and financially in terms of building our infrastructure. On the other hand, if the state comes through, we will probably have excessive revenues in that fund. But I guess, sitting here looking at it, I go back to, I would rather control our own future and not depend on the state. Because again, I think there is every chance they're going to do this. They've got really smart people working on it, they've got great plans. But it's the state and we have no control over them. The only thing we can control is things like this where we collect this money and then we can build infrastructure out as we need it. So it's a pretty substantial increase. But again, it's development paying for that. And I also go back to, we are a hot piece of real estate now. So I don't know if that's going to, by raising it to these levels, even if we go to the 46 and 4,800, that it's going to negatively impact our, our rate of growth.
And we can always lower it.
And we can always lower it. In fact, I would suggest that if the state comes through and we've got a water cascading more than we could ever use, then, you know, we can reevaluate this.
I'd like to hear what the utilities thinks.
I, I think Sarah was going to say something.
I was just going to say, I don't know, we all have different opinions on how to move forward with this. But I, I just think that, in my opinion, it would be smart just to wait and kind of get even more information from the state, see how, you know, I know obviously we're not going to get answers like right now. Like tomorrow's not going to be like a done deal, everything's signed, sealed and delivered. But I think it makes the most sense because I don't feel right overcharging people coming in if there's, if there is a need for or a reason for it. I mean, obviously, utility needs money. I mean, everyone needs money to be able to build infrastructure and stuff. Obviously, the more money, the better, you can have better facilities. But I just think we need to be careful how much we're charging people. We really need to look at it because I don't think it could be fair to people, you know? That's just, just my opinion.
But what the utilities is needing now is action now in order to capture funds from these new developments.
Yeah, let me try and address that a little bit. As the general manager representing the utilities resolution, I, I have to go with what they said. But if you're just asking personal opinion, I, I think we need to raise them some, somewhere close, you know, somewhere above the 2,700 and 3,200, but less, but I, I could see less than the 4,600 and 4,800. I've got one of our senior engineers here and community member, John Brandon.
Before you, before you go, I just have a kind of a summary-type question. Had we done the incremental rate, which would have been 3.4, where would we be right now?
The 27 and the 32.
No, that's not, that's not the question. If, yeah, if, if we had raised it by 3.4%.
If we had changed it to PPI, we'd be at the.
They would have been doing this all along, would we be in this type of a situation as drastic as it is now? That's, that's kind of what people pick up on, you know? Because we're, the, the, when we talk to our constituents, we'll say, well, they haven't done it since 2004. The question is, well, why not? You know, nobody wants to pay more money, but you're trying to close an 18-year gap. And we understand here why, but when we go and talk with constituents, the facts are just not in our favor when we do that.
Well, so if you, your question is, how come we, we just were raising them this year and not 10 years ago?
No, the question is, had we, had we been doing this and had the 3.4 all along, where would we be today? Where would that money be? What would that number be?
I, I think that's where that 3,620 and then the 3,077 would be.
Yeah, okay.
But I think, I think, Morris, what you're trying to ask, correct me if I'm wrong, is that would we be in a different situation where we wouldn't be needing as much money of a $4,600 increase if you would have been increasing it all along?
Yeah.
Is what he's saying, to, to help back pay?
Yeah.
If that makes sense, I think is that what you were trying to question?
The gap would be closed, I'm assuming. I mean, that's just the logical thought, it would be some.
Let me address that if you would. I'm John Brandon, and as Ed said, I'm, I'm old, so I'm, yeah, senior, I think, engineer. The, the delta from what this pays for development when it occurs. So if you have, and we are going to see a significant escalation of growth and number of EDUs in our communities. So councillor Jones, to your point, there hasn't been, the magnitude of development that we are going to see versus what we've seen the last 15 years is dramatic. So I, I wouldn't term it as a lost opportunity that the, the availability fees have stayed low for the period of time that they have, because frankly, there's not been the level of development that's occurred. So that, that's, it's a nominal amount of lost revenue. If we are sitting here two to five years from now and we're still at the same number, it's dramatic on the lost revenue because as, as you talked about, the development is getting ready to occur.
Right.
And these, councillor Messenger, to your point, these are based on projects that are in the utility CIP for the next five years that we know we need to do. They're not speculative. With the understanding and the range that you saw here this evening, if other funding sources will be used to pay for some of the utility infrastructure, then that list was revised on whose responsibility that is, those projects are still going to be built. So I hope that helps a little bit in that we're paying for what's going to have to happen as development occurs. We haven't missed on what's already taken place. And not much has taken place compared to what's going to take place the next five years.
Well, also, when, when you had that one slide that showed that the baseline was, was consistent, then the cost going up, that, that's kind of an odd visual when you think about it. Your costs are going up and yet you do not increase.
That, I mean, that somewhat reflects what construction has done. Now, if we had, if numerous development-type projects had been built during that time, the utility would be in a deficit position.
So I guess my.
So to kind of counter that is this, the availability fees are based on a project basis, was, as we understand the projects.
Yeah. So where, where I'm going at this is that I think when, when we're looking ahead here, we need to make sure that we're, we're using a good model. And it's unpredictable, I agree with that. But we need to be, we need to use a good model, have some good numbers in there. That way, we can communicate better to our constituents really what's going on.
Yeah, I think with great confidence you can do that. The basis of the projects are the five-years capital improvement plan that the utilities approved. We're not looking out 15 or 20. It's, it's a one-to-five-year snapshot. It's a, I wouldn't put certainty with that, but it's very predictable. And I think those, based on what we know here today, that is a very realistic, realistic assessment of what needs to take place.
Thank you. Part of the issue we have here too of, of, you know, the development of the capital plan and what utilities developed was going along and the formation of these ordinances were going along as these projects were kind of developing between the, the Fieldhouse lift station that the developers now essentially paying for is part, or were paying for actually as part of that development. You know, the discussions that we're having about the lift station for the business park. I mean, there's moving parts on the wastewater side with the LEAP district too that have implications as well. So we have kind of two tracks that are happening at once, right? And that's, it's definitely creating a moving target, right? So I think that's where I at least wanted to present to council the, call it the range, right? Because we, hey, we know these maybe, you know, the rest of the projects we know are, okay, we've got to do these for sure, right? But these three or so projects are kind of in that gray area. And then, so that lower number is like, if we pulled the gray area projects out, what's the baseline for the other projects, right? And then obviously, because of the 30 million, getting, you know, a $30 million project of water sourcing pulled out of there, that's a huge chunk of the water. So if we don't have that on our plate, then that's a discussion.
So, John, without pulling the LEAP area and the business park area out of there, we feel like the rate should be about 4,600 and 4,800, correct?
And that's. Because that's kind of. That is totally premised on the projects that were listed are in there, so the 30.
And also the utilities fully paying for all of that as well.
Correct, so that, that, those are the things that changed in four months from when we all sit down with utilities and we presented that. LEAP was an idea that we had no specifics on. And then the business park and the car development, utilities were taking the brunt of that financing for those projects at that time. As the mayor said, now there's been a closing on the car development. That's moved from Lebanon Utilities, a portion or a majority, to TIF financing. That, that's, that's a big change from where we were four to six months ago.
Right.
So did that answer your question, Dick?
That's, that's what I'm going to say is kind of like a small part of, of what could be the future of Lebanon as it grows. I mean, not counting, not counting out west, I'm thinking of your, your list of all the businesses and all the residential neighborhoods and everything, that's still could grow farther south and farther east.
It can. My understanding is the 10 MGD that we've discussed, that is, that's Lebanon's capacity for future growth. It's not to serve LEAP. Which is, that is a wonderful thing that if, we've been trying to get water from the south either through CEG or Whitestown for, we've had those discussions for over a decade. So if that, I don't, I hate to use the, the pun here, but a certain leap of faith, if that does happen from the south, that's a wonderful thing for, for Lebanon and Boone County, for that water supply to be able, on a regional basis, in two years to be available. That's a great answer, if that happens. Way better than 30 million in five years from now. But the, the probability or the likelihood for that to happen as you sit here tonight, I would hate to see the council and the utilities to delay. I would hate to see the council and the utilities to delay an increase on availability fees based on that uncertainty on whether that's zero, I mean, there's a basis to move the number up, water supply in or water, or water source in or water source out.
Well, and again, we have these drafted, right? It takes us two readings to amend these up again if we wanted to, right? That's the thing. It's, I understand the comment, we can always reduce these later. I think we all know, like, once it's there, it's there, right? And so, if, it's much easier to, to, if, to say, hey, a plan that we had didn't work out, we have to raise it. I think that's an easier process to go through than saying, hey, because, and no offense to utilities, right, but if they collect the fees, they will find the projects to, to use it for, right? So, I don't think there's a likelihood of them being reduced later that says, hey, well, we, we, this didn't shape how we planned for it, but we're going to do this instead, which is, as we should, right? We should be investing in infrastructure constantly, but as we all know, that's, could be an unlimited barrel that we're putting money into, right? So, that's kind of where I feel like it's not a hard process for, for us to amend these, right? We have the documentation that, that can justify a higher rate if we choose to implement that, but we also have to balance this as well because, you know, all these are paid for by new companies coming in as well and new, new home, I mean, these are all passed on to homeowners, right? And we've, you know, we've done our work on the city side, too, where we have park impact fees, road impact fees as well, right? So, we are having the growth is paying for the growth philosophy here, which is, which is the right way to have it, but we do have to make sure that stays within reason because those fees do get passed on to, to, to residents, right, and, and home builders and new homes, things like that, right? So, that's kind of a trade-off we have to consider as well in our, in our picture, so.
Well, yeah, but we're not the only city in the state of Indiana doing the same thing.
Correct.
I mean, we're not going to get out of line by raising...
And I'm not, and I'm not, and I'm not saying we should not raise them. I'm not saying that. I just want to make sure we, when we, we raise them to the rate that's appropriate for what projects we feel are going to be funded by the availability fees.
I agree with that.
And that's, and that's, and I don't want to include projects that won't be constructed by the availability fees included in those fees. That, that's all my perspective is.
Yeah, I understand. The other thing is if we end up, we can re-watch, we should be watching, so should the utilities, if the money's coming in faster than going out, at some point in time, we need to put a stop on it and bring it down if we're having more money than we need. But you can't, it's easier to take it backwards than it is to bring it up. That's why I'm looking at it.
Yep. And I think it's important to emphasize what the mayor said is, I think when we talk about rates and, and significant increases, this doesn't affect anybody that's a current customer at all.
Yeah.
This is new people, businesses, individuals that want to move into our community. We're asking them to pay for the capacity we need to service them. So, it's a big increase, but, you know, we haven't raised it for a long time because as Mr. Brann said, we really didn't need to. You know, we had plenty of water capacity, we had plenty of sewage capacity, and we're running out of it, so we need to give them the money so that they can build that infrastructure so we don't have to start saying, sorry, we'd like to have you here, but we can't.
Andrew's got something.
No, the only thing I wanted to add is, you know, as long as we're doing the calculation correctly every year and we're using those projects, I agree with you, if we collect more money than what we need, that money will sit there and it will be used in the future to lower rate increases for our current customers. But every year, if we do the calculation based on what we know, say we come back in May of next year and we, we have an agreement with Leap to all the water, then when we redo those calculations, we would bring those back to you and it would get lowered versus us leaving it at the, at the larger rates.
I, the challenge I have is I find it hard to believe that we will address availability fees every single year because we have a habit that we haven't changed since 2004, right? So, our, I mean, so that, that's where I, I think there's a stasis point you reach that we, if you feel like it's in the right bounds, there isn't, and, I mean, there has to be a reason we're acting on something, right? And...
Well, she, she just said that she's going to recalculate every year.
My question is then to that, Mayor, why don't we put something in the ordinance that says we have to look at it yearly? So, whoever else is not sitting in this chair for the next 20 years, even the New Orleans have to look at it.
Well, and, I mean, putting in the ordinance that we look at it is different than we adopt a, because we also can't shackle future councils that they have to adopt a rate change every year on availability fees either, right? We can't do that.
It doesn't mean it has to go up, it can also go down.
I hear you, but...
You have to look at it.
I, I think, you know, I mean, I think you're seeing where I'm coming from on it. You know, I just think it's about finding the right balance in this situation. And, and I, as someone that's been in these meetings with the state, maybe I guess I'm more confident in their ability to solve this problem and their, and why they want to solve this problem for us. And if we can do that where it's not our ratepayers or our, not our new residents paying for that, I think that's a benefit, and I think it's, I think we're in a gray area when we're charging people for a rate that was developed based on a project that it's not actually being done, and I think that's just a gray area, so.
You know, something I think we need to, we've got a list of, I'll say, projects, the things that they've calculated us on, and, you know, we've got a lot of, I'm assuming we still have a lot of 100-year-old sewers running around Lebanon, and that water lines and sanitary lines and so forth that need to be repaired somewhere in our community, and we're just looking at one where we closed Ford Eye Street for one now, you know, that probably was, I'm sure was not planned, you know? So, you know, this is a list for them to work with, it's not necessarily the list that could actually happen because that, that list is going to change. Something could change this list, and, you know, I have always said for years that it would be nice if we had a periodic rate increase every year, okay, that it just went up a little bit every year continually and never have this discussion.
And we have, and we have done that on the, on the actual rates themselves, right? We have done that, we have not done that on the availability fees.
But then also on the, but also along with that, you've got to have a, you've got to have a timeline or something where you say, all right, we've got to review that rate and see if that rate is enough every year to keep us going and so forth, but I don't know, I just think we've got, there's, we've got, other than this list, there's still a lot of projects out there that we don't know about that need to be done.
Yeah, so, I, just to address kind of the aging infrastructure, that is kind of what the availability, that is what the availability fees would be used for, but as far as the future items go, we, on our budget, we do a yearly budget and then a five-year capital plan. So, as, I, I think as Mr. Brann kind of alluded to, things would come off if, you know, 10 million gallons does come in without a cost to utilities, lift stations are paid for by TIF, then that five-year plan would, would be adjusted accordingly, you know, so, but it, but we don't want to go 10 years, and, but we also do want to address the aging infrastructure for current ratepayers, also not just growth, and then when we, we can increase the capacity or, you know, increase the size of the water treatment plant, increase the size of the wastewater treatment plant, availability fees can be used for that, which will also help. And I think that that, that may be why that graph looks kind of odd, is that you just have availability fees and the cost, but you don't have the rates in there. I think the rates, you would see the rates kind of climb up with the cost and, so, it, but it is still off. And then I also agree, looking back on it, when those rates, the availability fees were first adopted, I think for a couple of years there, we only had maybe three, four housing permits, so...
In 2015, we had two new housing permits.
So, adding, you know, increasing that every year for two or three houses didn't, I, it makes sense at the time, but with, you know, the, the planning that we have now, the growth that we have now, you, like Mr. Brann said, you would have, you would see a significant lost opportunity there for the growth to continue to pay for the growth. So, just to address, we do have some aging infrastructure that, that we would be able to increase the, the capacity, the size of the lines and, and put new in, and we, we could use availability fees for that project.
May I complete my testimony by...
Yes.
...wading into wastewater?
Sure.
Let's see, here is the, the proposed computation, and there's no reason to go over the details, but the, the bottom line there is, is the $4,800 that we get speaking of. The, the incremental cost component includes these projects, and we have talked about how some of these projects will hopefully be paid for by TIF, and if the, the Fieldhouse project, the Hickory Fieldhouse project develops half as much as proposed, my look at the potential TIF flows, cash flows, shows that there will be ample money to pay for these projects, but again, I'm a memorandum of understanding guy, and we don't have that with RDC right now.
We, we do on the St. Edward 39 lift station. It's part of the development plan, that's part of the, it is for that, but not on the, the Business Park lift station.
Good point. And back in December, when this was prepared, we didn't have that then.
Fair.
So, looking at the revised fee, which we've also discussed, excuse me, that's where the $3,200 comes in, excuse me. Now, it's, it is instructive to look at the development projects that have undergone TAC meetings to see what future EDUs will be used. Right now, we have 5,442 EDUs available in our wastewater plant. If you add up all of these developments and they develop fully as indicated, it will require 11,948 EDUs, which is significantly more than our plant capacity. Now, we have a preliminary engineering estimate on expanding our plant. That, that estimate is that the cost will be $38,201,000. Our engineers have been asked to do a detailed estimate, and when that detailed estimate is done, we expect that cost projection to increase. Now, let's take a look next to how much dollars will be generated by these projects if they're fully developed. With the current $1,700 wastewater availability fee is $20 million. If you use your revised 3,200, it's $37,800,000, and if you use the proposed 4,800, it's $56,000. Now, I want to review some, some factors that support the proposed 4,800 fee. It was recently determined that the Lily gaslands, grasslands development by itself will use up 52% of our remaining wastewater plant capacity. The near-term need to expand our wastewater plant capacity was not identified until this year, so we've been talking about the projects that we identified in December and their projected cost and who would pay for it, but we're not talking about as much, which I think is important, is the projects that have come up, the needs that have come up this year. And one of those needs is for the significant cost for a wastewater treatment plant expansion. I talked about how that's an initial estimate, 38.2 million, but it's expected to go up when we get a more detailed engineering estimate. It is not known how quickly or how slowly all the identified future projects will be completed and when the estimated future availability fees will actually be paid. And all the calculated fees will not be collected because developers will get upsized credits if our wastewater infrastructure is expanded or improved to benefit current ratepayers or accommodate future growth. So, excuse me, I'm sorry. I think there's a compelling reason when you look at what is driving the need for our wastewater plant expansion to go ahead and adopt the 40, was it, $800 proposed availability fees. So, that concludes my testimony. I appreciate your patience, and, and I sincerely do appreciate the depth of the conversation that you're having. It, it reflects good on you, and it's a, you're good public servants for, for, for our citizens in the way you're seriously considering this.
Hey, Aaron, I have a question. What is an upsized credit?
Would you, I'll give you a really good explanation rather than my back-of-the-enclosure explanation.
An upsized credit would be if a housing development, specifically for that development, let's say, would need a six-inch water main, but we want to make sure if there's potential development next to that housing addition, we may, with the help of BFNS Engineering, may say, well, that development will need to connect to this water main, so we need it to be a 10-inch for Lebanon Utilities. So, the developer will only pay for what they need for their development, and then the availability fees that we collect on the water side would be applied to upsize that to what would benefit Lebanon Utilities in the future growth. So, the developer pays the exact same whether we, we want to upsize that or not, then we would use availability fees as credit instead of collecting them and then turn around and paying to have the, the line upsized, we would just use that as a credit. So, they would develop it, they would install the water main to our specifications, so it would be ready for future growth, but would also feed that development and the needs of that development without the developer paying extra to, to, to do that. So, the developer pays what their needs are, and the upsized credit would be what the utilities determines would be for future growth and future needs in order to not have to go back in two years later, put a bigger water main in to feed a, to feed another development that has kind of started, started next, next door to it.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for any of the audience we have here tonight? Further discussion?
Just Mike, my comment is, I would still go with the $4,600 for water and $4,800 for sewer based on the knowledge I have today.
I concur with Mike. I think they've demonstrated the need, and we would be investing in the future of some of the most important infrastructure in our community, so.
And it can always be adjusted later, as Sandra said.
So, then let's have Rob start reading these ordinances. I know they're going to be long again, so let's do the water, which is ordinance 2022-22 first.
Yeah, the Scott order. Okay, thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2022-22 is an ordinance that amends various ordinances that are listed in there that establishes a schedule of non-recurring rates and charges collected for the use and services provided by the Water Works Utility of the City of Lebanon. Whereas the city owns and operates through its Utility Service Board, and that's defined as the board, a water utility known as Lebanon Utility, whereas this council, based upon the recommendations from the board, again, periodically evaluates changes and readjusts its various fees. Whereas the board, based in part upon the advice of its financial advisor, Baker Tilly, adopted Resolution 2022-03 recommending to this council various adjustments to the non-recurring fees and charges. This council has caused notice of a public hearing set forth on the various charges that are all described in here and what has been advertised. A public hearing will be required, we'll do that here in a second. This council finds that the proposed modifications to the city's existing non-recurring fees and charges should be enacted. non-recurring fees and charges should be enacted. Mayor, Council, I don't know if you want me to go through these. We went through them in detail before, but.
No, that's fine.
There's six pages thereafter that go through the detail that we read before. So.
Okay. Ordinance 2022, 2022-22 has been read on second reading. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on the ordinance. If you have any public comments, please step forward, state your name for the, for the record as well. Seeing no sudden movements, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2022-22. It's mouthful. Further discussion from council?
No, sir.
I think we should make, my opinion, I think we should amend and change the total to $2,700 for the water. That's just my, my, changing the reoccurring fee for water to be the availability fee, to be the $2,700 versus the $4,600.
So on page three?
Oh, sorry.
No, you're fine. You're fine. I tried that in front of me.
Not sure if anybody else feels the same, but.
That's where the availability fee section is, right?
Yeah.
So you want to, so, so make a motion to amend section one, so it reads $2,700 per EDU. Okay. There's a motion.
What's that again, Mayor?
There's a motion to amend under section one subsection, or subsection B sub subsection one, under availability fee to change that from $4,600 per EDU to $2,700 per EDU. Is there a second on that motion? Okay. Seeing none, motion dies for lack of a second. Okay. Any further discussion, comments from council?
No, sir.
This time then, I would entertain a motion concerning ordinance 2022-22.
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 2022-22.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Brent. All those who say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Ordinance is adopted six to one. Okay. Next will be the wastewater ordinance, which is ordinance 2022-23, revised schedule of non-recurring fees and charges for wastewater.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2022-23 concerns an ordinance that amended, amends the various ordinances listed therein that establishes a schedule of a non-recurring rates and charges collected for the use and services provided by the Waste Water Works Utility of the City of Lebanon. Whereas the city owns and operates through its utility service board, defined as board, a wastewater utility known as Lebanon Utilities, for the purposes of providing safe, reliable, and efficient disposal of wastewater. Whereas this council, based upon the recommendations from the board, periodically evaluates changes and readjusts its various fees and charges to collect sufficient revenue in order to pay all of its expenses that are listed herein. Whereas the board, based in part upon the advice of its financial advisor, Baker Tilly, adopted Resolution 2022-03 recommending to this council various adjustments to the non-recurring fees and charges. This council has caused notice of a public hearing, which sets forth certain charges that are, have been advertised, posted, and mailed. And this council will hold a public hearing momentarily. This council finds the proposed modifications to the city's existing non-recurring fees and charges should be enacted. Again, there are seven pages that are listed throughout here that we went through in detail. I'm happy to go through them if you like. But we've done that previously.
Okay. Ordinance has been read on second reading. At this time now, I'll open up the public hearing on ordinance 2022-23. Any public comments, please step forward, state your name for the record. Again, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2022-23. Council discussion?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Are there any further motions? Motion to, would entertain a motion to approve from someone?
Make a motion. We approve 2022-23.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from, is that John? Sorry. Are you? Motion second. All those who say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
That ordinance is adopted six to one. Okay. Next will be ordinance 2022-21, scheduled non-recurring fees and charges for the electric utility.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2022-21 concerns an ordinance amending ordinances numbered 2022-13 and 2012-11, establishing a schedule of non-recurring rates and charges collected for the use and services provided by the municipal electric utility of the City of Lebanon. Whereas the city owns and operates through its utility service board, defined as board, an electric utility known as Lebanon Utilities, for the purposes of providing safe, reliable, and efficient electric service in and around the city pursuant to Indiana Code. This council, based upon the recommendations from the board, periodically evaluates changes and readjusts its various fees and charges to collect sufficient revenues in order to pay all its expenses. Whereas the electric utility is subject to the jurisdiction of the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. Whereas existing rates and charges for electric services provided by the Lebanon Municipal Electric Utility were placed in effect following approval of the commission in various causes that are listed in this ordinance. Whereas the board, based in part upon the advice of its financial advisor, Baker Tilly, adopted Resolution 2022-03 recommending to this council various adjustments to the non-recurring fees and charges. Whereas neither the board nor the council seeks to adjust electric rates, only the non-recurring fees and charges that are specified in Appendix C. There are several pages after this ordinance. You get to Appendix C approximately on page 10. And those rates are listed, and we went through those at the prior meeting. They're, that consists of approximately three pages.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Ordinance 2022-21 has been read on second reading. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If you have any public comments, please step forward, state your name for the record. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2022-21. Council discussion?
No, sir.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 2022-21.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second from Keith. All those who say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is adopted amicably. Thank you, council. All right. Next is ordinance, I've lost my place here. All right. Ordinance 2022-24, revised schedule of non-recurring fees and charges for telecommunications.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2022-24 amends the ordinances listed in this ordinance that establishes a schedule of non-recurring rates and charges collected for the use and services provided by the telecommunications utility of the City of Lebanon. Whereas the city owns and operates through its utility service board, again defined as board, a telecommunications utility known as Lebanon Utilities I Lines, for the purposes of providing safe, reliable, and efficient communications services in and around the city pursuant to Indiana Code. Whereas this council, based upon the recommendations from the board, periodically evaluates changes and readjusts its various fees and charges to collect sufficient revenue in order to pay all the expenses incident to operation and maintenance of the utility. Whereas this council has caused notice of a public hearing, set forth a hearing on the charges that has been duly advertised. This council finds that the proposed modifications to the city's existing non-recurring fees and charges should be enacted. Again, there are 14 pages that are detailing these provisions in this ordinance that we went through at the prior meeting. And I'm happy to go through them if you like.
Okay. Ordinance 2022-24 has been read on second reading. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Any public comments, please step forward, state your name for the record. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2022-24. Council discussion?
No, sir.
Any motions out there?
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 2022-24.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Brent. All those who say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That ordinance is adopted amicably. Thank you, council. Okay, that concludes what I have for old business. Is there anything from council?
Nothing from me.
Okay. Would move on to claims. And would entertain a motion concerning the claims?
Motion to pay the claims, second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the claims.
Sure.
All those who say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Claims are approved. Any further discussion, comments from council?
Not this time.
Okay. I know it's kind of late night. Appreciate the hard work.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'm just saying something.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I was thanking you guys for the good discussion we had and appreciate the time. But yeah, sure. We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Morris. All those who say aye? Too late. We have motions, all those, we have a motion, second adjourned. All those who say aye?
Aye.
Okay, there. Now we have a majority. We are adjourned. Our next city council meeting is Monday, September 26th at 7:15 PM. Have a great night.